I'd like to call the Mashpee School Committee May 17th Business Meeting to order. It's 5:32 and our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which is a standing obligation under God, indivisible, with the right to protest for all.
The Mashpee Public Schools would like to recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Next item, we're going to ratify the agenda of May 17th and I understand there is a suggestion to take item 10 in the Policy Subcommittee Report Outs and move them with their associated items because we'll be talking about the math curriculum in item 6 and we will be talking about the wellness policy in item 9. Does anyone want to make a motion that we move those?
So I'll make a motion that we ratify the agenda with the changes of the 10, we moved to be co with like 6, item 10, with 6 and you were saying was it the wellness part of the policy on 10 would also be in 9?
Yes.
Yeah, to win those changes.
Any second?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yeah, okay, any discussion? Nope, alright, so we'll go to vote. Danny, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So the agenda was ratified with changes. Okay, item number 3, School Committee Reorganization for Officers, Subcommittees, and Liaisons. You should all have received the email from Superintendent DeBoer and also have the handout in your packet. So looking first at Officers, for Chair, both myself and Brian have expressed interest. So I don't know if anyone wants to make a nomination.
So the way it works is each person?
Yeah, gives their spiel. So Brian, do you want to go first?
Sure. Weniki Suckinatasuis Moskutanu Tomas Masipia Kana Taimasipia, I say good day, my name is Bearhart, I come from Mashpee and live in Mashpee. Anyone that knows me will tell you that I am extremely proud of my culture, history, and family, as everyone should be. I want to provide a background about the history of Mashpee Masipi, the place of the great waters, and as our land acknowledgement recognizes, we have been here for over 10,000 years. Mashpee was an Indian plantation reservation prior to 1870 when the Wampanoags controlled affairs and voted against the incorporation as a quote-unquote "town." However, the town was incorporated and the land was allocated to Wampanoag families but would be lost, the majority of it being taken by taxes and land grabs. At this point also in the town and tribe's history, all elected positions were being held by Wampanoags until the 1970s. Not only have I been the first Wampanoag elected in 52 years after Alice Hicks in 1969, the wife of Frank Hicks, former Selectman, Police Chief, Town Moderator, and more, being elected in 2021, but I would also be the first Wampanoag Chairman in 54 years and follow in the footsteps of my ancestors that served before me such as Alice Hicks, Gusta Viscaut, Bessie Sturgis, Abigail Evelyn Peters, Amanda Stella Hicks, and many more great leaders. My great-great-grandmother Amanda Stella Hicks served on the school committee for over 30 years along with being Chairperson for seven years. In fact, her final term as Chairperson of the school committee was in 1963, exactly 60 years from today. It would be my honor to follow in her footsteps. This is not the reason I want the position and I'm a firm believer that one should also be qualified. As the current Chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe and Co-Chairman of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State SEAL Special Commission, who is tasked with providing recommendations to the offensive current State SEAL, along with being a Mashpee High School alumni, having familiarity with Robert's Rules of Order, and facilitating meetings for over 15 years is also an asset that I will bring to this position. As the original petitioner and leading the efforts to change our very own town seal, I believe that speaks to my ability to collaborate and bring forward solutions. Recently, I also served on the town's Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, before having to resign due to the town's charter that prohibits anyone from holding an appointed and elected position. At that time, I had an important decision to make and the choice was clear. I decided to choose our children and families over history and the environment, which are all things that I love and care deeply about. Now that I have more time along with having worked with other town boards and agencies, this will also be an advantage as the current climate in town has not changed. We should also keep in mind that the Chairman of this Board serves as the liaison to the Select Board and Finance Committees respectively, and one of the main reasons, as I would like to see the town recognize the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion, along with acknowledging the excellent work that the school district has done. The Superintendent in School Committee has done more work for this community in diversity, equity, and inclusion, along with being recognized with the 2021 Magna Award for Equity from the National School Board Association for the collaboration between the tribe and school district. In closing, it would be my honor to serve alongside my peers and collaborate with our Superintendent DeBoer to also bring forward some minor changes to the district as tomorrow is never promised to anyone. We must continue our work for the greater good of our community and in my final year on the school committee, I would be grateful if allowed to serve as Chairperson because regardless of if I run for reelection or not, nothing prohibits anyone from being challenged and the possibility of any of us losing their seat. Regardless of everyone's decision, I will work together in the spirit of unity and for our community to ensure that our families get the best education while making history along the way. Katavatosh, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So for myself, as you know, I'm starting my second term. I am just about to complete my Masters in Public Administration, which has given me a lot of new insight on how boards such as this operate within a town system such as Mashpee. I have been a volunteer with the school district pretty much since my daughter was in kindergarten from volunteering as a PTO person, sitting on the Coombe School and the Quashnet Principal Advisory Council, and also was the Secretary of the PTO. So I've done that portion of working with the parents in the district in that sense and feel that that experience definitely helped me understand the needs of our town and that's why, you know, back in 2019, I made my first run and was elected in 2020. During my time on the committee, you know, we've done a lot of great work. I've attended three of the National School Board Council's meetings, first one via Zoom, the second in San Diego, and most recently in Orlando, and have gained very valuable information and insight from our national colleagues. In addition to that, growing up in Mashpee, I am familiar with how the town, you know, where it's coming from, maybe not to the same extent as my fellow board member, but I do, I am aware of, you know, some of the challenges we face in our district. In addition to that, I, you know, still have a great connection with the community through Girl Scouts. I'm an active Girl Scout leader in town and am doing work through that organization as well. So children and education are kind of my two passions in life, which is partially why I stay very committed to this organization, Girl Scouts, as well as the school committee and the town as a whole. I served last year as Vice Chair and, you know, with the completion of my degree, feel that I now have the time to commit to being Chair as it does come with many time requirements, additional meetings with the Superintendent, with the Select Board, and other various liaison positions in attending different meetings. So I know that my calendar is freed up quite considerably now that school is done. But I would greatly appreciate the chance to lead this committee for a year and continue the work that we have begun, continue to make improvements where improvements are needed, and, you know, keeping our focus on the children of Mashpee, all the children of Mashpee, and making sure that we are giving voices to those who need voices because ultimately that is what our job is here on this committee, is to ensure that the children of Mashpee are getting a solid education and that the budget reflects that and, you know, works with the town to ensure that our children are given the best opportunities and to ensure that our Superintendent is following through on what her directives are as well. So I would humbly request your vote and support in going for the Chair position and thank you very much. So, that being said, we'll entertain a nomination, I suppose.
No, everyone's been nominated.
Everyone's been nominated, okay.
Yes, so it's a clarify.
Okay.
Because we?
This is the nomination process, okay.
We accept a slate of nominees that was approved when we accepted the agenda.
Yeah.
So everyone's nominated.
Alright, so everyone's nominated. So are we voting on the slate then or are we going to individually vote?
You're voting individually.
Individually, alright.
On that position.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Don, and remember, like, being memory here. Because I was driving here going, how did we do this last year?
That's why we set this up.
This is exactly why we set this up. So, so then how, the vote would just be?
First person, second person.
Okay. So, going down the line, is it a roll call vote or?
Roll call, yeah.
Okay. So I guess then we go to roll call vote and Dan, how, first person or second person?
So being new to the team here, you know, I think stepping in and having seen, you know, just the progression of meetings over time, I think it makes sense for me seeing Kathy kind of move from a Vice Chair position into a Chair position with the hope of seeing a future for Brian to move up as well. So my vote would be for Kathy.
Brian?
I'll stay.
Don?
Kathy?
Matt?
Kathy.
Okay, and I would, if I, that's, yeah, I would vote for myself, so that would be a four for Kathy and one abstention.
That carries it.
And that carries it. Okay, so, thank you. Alright, for Vice Chair, Matt, would you like to go first or would you all listen first?
Madam Chair, before we do that, I would withdraw my name in consideration for Vice Chair.
Okay.
I was gonna say I was gonna be Secretary since we didn't have that.
Okay.
That might answer that one.
Alright. Brian, are you willing to accept the Vice Chair position? Okay, and Matt, Don, did you want to go for second? Alright.
Well, that answers that.
That answers that. So then our members at large will be Brian Whedon and Dan Rodriguez.
No.
Don, I'm sorry, Don, that's right, I'm sorry. Don and Dan. Okay. Moving on now to subcommittees. So for the curriculum, we have two primary, Matt and Don. I will remove myself as alternate on curriculum. We only need one alternate, so.
I can care, I'll remove myself also.
Okay. So that means for curriculum, we have primary of Matt and Don with an alternate of Dan. For negotiations, I, you guys are in the middle of working on that right now, correct? So I'm comfortable removing myself from that as well and leaving the two, Don and Brian, who began the negotiations of the primary. That, we only need one alternate for that, so.
I can take myself out of that one because I often haven't been able to dispute.
Are you okay with that, Dan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, alright. Policy, we have myself and Matt. We only need one alternate, so.
I'll take myself out of that.
Okay. Alright, well, okay, but we can't have Dan be the alternate on all of them, so.
If possible, I'd like to remove myself from that one as well.
Okay. He would like to remove himself from policy. So, Don or Brian, do either of you want to be the alternate for policy?
Have you done policy? Brian, have you done policy?
I think we've all done policy at this point, so it's.
I'll do it this way.
Okay. Alright, we need a second for Superintendent Evaluation along with Brian.
I can jump on that.
Okay. Unless, Dan, you're not a primary on any of these and that would actually be probably for your first year if you wanted a primary spot, that might be a good.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with being primary on that.
Yeah.
It's pretty light duty for that particular subcommittee. Okay, so in terms of the alternate, anybody have strong feelings about being alternate? Because I'll remove myself if either of you really want it.
I don't.
Because I'm, I don't think I'm an alternate for any of these yet. It's up to you, Matt.
Yeah.
I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll stay on or come off, whatever you guys want, yeah. Thank you.
Have you, and you've done Superintendent Evaluation?
Yes, I've done a primary on it before, so I don't mind being an alternate or not doing it.
Okay. Actually, Dan, Dan, Don, okay. Okay, is everyone comfortable with the subcommittee assignments?
So is Matt the alternate on?
Matt will be the alternate on Superintendent.
Perfect.
Is everyone comfortable with how that?
Yeah.
Is organized? Okay. Moving on to liaison positions. Typically, as Brian stated, we do have the Chair, but Brian, if you really wanted to attend that as liaison, that, you know, I'll leave that to you if you really want to do that, but typically it is the Chair. Yes, Select Board, sorry, yes. It's okay. Okay, so Brian, you're going to be primary for that? Okay. Is it okay if I go to alternate, Matt and Don?
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay. We had no one come forward for the primary. Don has decided he is ready to let someone else do that, which I think is wise, that we get the opportunity to do that. Anybody who's in the alternate position, would you like to step forward? If not, I will step forward, but I'll give it to the alternates first to, if you would like to step forward, because there is a training that is required and there are monthly meetings, correct, Don? That would be in addition to our school committee meeting.
Are those generally during the day, like, normal, like?
No, they're at 5:15, 5:15 on Tuesdays.
Okay, I'll jump in that.
So you'll be primary, Matt?
Yeah.
Dan and Brian, do either of you have strong feelings about being alternate? Are you okay with being alternate, Dan?
I'm comfortable with that as well.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, we really don't have an alternate because of the training required.
Yes.
For that, so it's, it's, the primary doesn't show up.
Yeah.
There's nobody.
No representation.
Right.
Would you ever vote neutral?
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question.
Well, the committee has to appoint them, as I understand you, appoint one.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, like, I don't want to steal away from Dan's an opportunity then, like, you know, but you're just getting into this too, so.
I mean, you can attend via Zoom, so give that some flexibility.
Nice.
Alright, Finance Committee, myself and Brian both step forward as primary. Okay. And alternate, anyone have strong feelings on those, on the alternate spot for that?
I'm comfortable being alternate if others want to or I can step back as well.
Yeah, volunteer.
Alright. You're it, Dan. Planning and Construction, we all, we all seem to put in for this one as well, so Matt, Don, and Brian, which one of you would like to be primary?
I'll take my name on.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, so Matt, you're our primary. And I will be the alternate. Okay. Sick Bank, Matt, you are primary. Have we all done Sick Bank? Has everyone had a chance to be on Sick Bank? Except Dan. So, they're quick meetings, they happen frequently, but they're pretty quick, well, not too frequently, so I don't know. Then they're Zoom, they're all on Zoom.
Yeah.
They're like 15 minutes, Dan.
If that.
I'm comfortable, again, I, no, I'm new to the team here, so I'm comfortable with being alternative if others aren't or would like to step back.
If you want to take that.
Alright.
Yeah, perfect.
So what is he?
Alternate. He's, Matt is the main.
Yeah.
Dan is the alternate. For the tribe, if anybody else wants it, I've done it the last two years, so I put my name forward, but if anyone else would like that, but I'm more than happy to continue being the liaison to the tribe. So, and then Matt and Dan, which one of you would like?
I was gonna remove myself because of all the other things I've taken.
Well, Dan is now alternate on three, so unless Dan wanted the tribe more than Sick Bank and we could, well, you didn't put in for Sick Bank, you're primary on that, so it's up to you two.
I'm comfortable with being a part of the Wampanoag, whatever works.
Yeah, but that's fine.
Okay, so, so I'm the primary and Dan is the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. Working Groups, Finance, Don and myself as primary, Matt, Dan, and Brian, which one of you would like to be alternate? You all put in for it, does anyone want to?
Not me, Brian.
Okay.
And then, do we feel, Dan, do you feel your plate's getting a little full? I don't mind stepping up on that because you're just jumping in here and I don't want to.
Well, Working Groups, remember, are a little different than liaison positions. Working Groups might need a little bit.
More time.
More, I mean, looking at what, Dan's alternate on the liaison position, so.
Yeah.
It's up to you. I did want, I did notice, you know, yeah, it's, it's up to you guys.
If you want, Dan, I'll withdraw, I'll alternate on that, yeah.
Sounds good.
Alright. Outreach and Engagement, we have Matt and Brian. Alternate, Don, Dan, either one of you.
And I feel comfortable stepping back from that if, obviously, Don, if you'd like to go.
Well, I put my name in for.
Alternate.
I'll alternate on the rest one, so.
I'll, I'll take alternate on Outreach, that's fine. Okay, so Matt and Brian are primary, I am alternate for Outreach. School Committee Efficiency and Effectiveness, we had Matt, myself, and Brian. I am happy to step back from that one if Matt and Brian want it or if either of you wanted to step back. I know, Brian, you have been on that one previously, Matt, I don't know.
I haven't, I don't think I have been on that one, so that's why I took it, yeah. Unless you want it, still Brian, thank you, I don't mind.
It doesn't matter, there's two seats.
There's two seats, so I'll step back from that one and Don will be the alternate. And then Plan for Success, we have Matt and Don and Brian as the alternate. And then Legislative Representative, that one I feel should be the Chair.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So I'm just looking here.
Yeah, I'm reviewing it as well.
Could we have Dan on any of the primary working groups?
No, we don't, and that was what I wanted to kind of circle back to.
If he wants to do Plan for Success.
Dan, do you have any of the working groups? Do we still, do we still have, Dan? Uh-oh.
He really should be on that.
I know, and that's kind of where I was going when I saw him step back from Outreach. Do you think we can get him back?
It's his first meeting, I don't think he knows. I do think I have him.
We'll just give it a minute, see if we can get him back so we can finalize this.
It always is fun, the first meeting, it's like, alright, we're gonna sign you a bunch of stuff, like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
You don't even know what you're signing.
Yeah, right?
Obviously, it's just that not so much he left.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'm thankful he at least is trying, I know he's at a conference, so I appreciate that he's zooming in from his work conference.
I would suggest.
I would suggest either Outreach, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, either Outreach or.
Or Plan for Success.
Since I'm already on Finance, I mean, who can take over Plan for Success?
So you'll step back from Plan for Success?
Yeah. This is what happens when you don't call in.
Alright, so Plan for Success will be Matt, Dan as primary and Brian as alternate. Okay, so that goes, we've got everybody as primary in subcommittees, we have everybody, he doesn't have a primary liaison position either, but.
I didn't know if, so Sick Bank is one of those ones that like, as a secondary, I can, I can alternate, I could like chip call in with him too and like, you know, help guide that. Like, I could take a backseat but still also help out with it.
He said his computer decided to reboot working on rejoining, so sorry.
Okay.
Tell him he signed up for every.
He will now run it.
I'm just saying that might be an easier one to like.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
I think it's a good one.
I like that.
And I can, I'll still call in with it too, yeah.
And he can also come to the partnership, the tribal partnership meetings as well, so I think that would.
So Sick Bank primary is gonna be Dan.
Yes.
And then Matt, the alternate?
Yes.
Unless anyone else wanted that, I think.
Again, I think we've all, at this point, I think we've all had our chance at all of them, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Sure, I'll get on the tribe then.
It's a fun one, it's good to know.
I think it's only one I haven't.
We're working on and, you know, keeping that momentum going is really important, so. Okay, any other questions or discussion or anything on the organization? Okay, alright. Yes, we do, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the slate as just discussed.
Chair, I'd like a motion to approve the Mashpee School Board's 24 positions, so maybe on the tribe, I'm just.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Chair, none, I'll call for a vote, Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Alright, do we have anyone for public comment? Thank you. Alright, next, kind of a bittersweet moment here, we're going to recognize our retirees, so I'll turn it over to you Superintendent DeBoer.
Before we do that, I do want to acknowledge that Eliza, Elijah Switzer is here with us tonight, he is the new Coombe School Principal, starting July 1.
Quashnet.
That was some kind of a slip, I'm not sure why. Yes, he is the new principal of this school right here, 3 through 6, Quashnet School, he is taking, he is the new middle child, yes, Mary Kate. But Elijah spent the day today at the Quashnet School when it was alive and thriving with staff and students and was here, so we invited him so that the school committee could meet him as well, so Elijah, meet the school committee, plus Dan who's not here. He will be back for a greater opportunity for you to talk to him as well, but we appreciate you staying and being here with us tonight. And we are here to rep, to recognize retirees, we do not have all of them here with us tonight. Everyone, once you retire, some people have already retired and so I think sometimes, you know, your life changes for the better, I've heard. Anyway, and then we have some who are officially ending on June 30th, so I'm gonna go through the list of names and then. Anyway, and then we have some who are officially ending on June 30th, so I'm gonna go through the list of names and their years of service, and then specifically, we have three members here that I want to talk about, so I'm going to do the non-present retirees first. So we have Patricia Ahern, who is currently serving as a school year administrative assistant at Mashpee Middle High School. Actually, that's where she spent most of her 11 years with the Mashpee Public Schools. We're very grateful for all of the work that she's done and the connections she's made with our students. Karen Camp is a special education teacher at the Coombe School, and she's finishing up her 25th year with Mashpee, and she has years prior to that where she served actually overseas in military schools. We will miss her. Jan Ellen Everson is a paraprofessional, she's probably definitely been at the Quaschent and the Mashpee Middle High School, I'm not sure about Cooms. She's finishing 25 years and she's just amazing in the work that she does with a very special group of students and scholars. Let's see, Tom Hoppensat, he finished 24 years, he is one of the members who left in late October. I think that might have been a birthday for him, he did 24 years with Mashpee. Most recently, he was the Science Department Chair for Mashpee Middle High School. Deb McDonald is a paraprofessional, she also left, I think, in the fall or December. She did 15 years and she worked at Quaschent as well as the Coombe School and did a great job. Cheryl McIntyre, many of you may know her, she was the Executive Administrative Assistant here at the Quaschent School, she held other positions earlier in her time. She completed 26 years with Mashpee and I believe she left at the end of October. Is that when she left?
Yes.
It's all blurring together. We also have teacher Sal Nacella, he is the drafting, computer, CAD, all kinds of like high-tech stuff at Mashpee Middle High School. It's Sal's room, I'm never quite sure, he will gladly explain everything he's doing when you go in there with great enthusiasm. What I always learned about him is he was very much self-taught in the latest technology that was in the industry, and he would bring that to our students, and he will be missed 23 years working with Mashpee. And Mary Russell is a first grade teacher at the Coombe School. She's finishing, I think she must be the most senior in terms of years, 33 years with Mashpee. Pretty much first grade in, in the, in the zone of her years. Still a fabulous teacher, going strong all the way to the end of her career, so we're grateful that for all of her years. We do have three additional retirees here. We have Maria Fisher, you got, you three can come up, as I call you. Maria Fisher has finished 31 years with Mashpee, and it's my understanding she started in the cafeteria. That is true. And any of you who had children who came through the Coombe School in particular, in, in the more recent years, Maria was generally the first face, Deb, you need to come up here too. Maria was generally the first face or the first voice on a telephone that you would hear. And I know that when we posted about her retirement on Facebook, I don't know how high up it got, it got over 100 responses where former students, former parents, everyone has such fond recollection of Maria and the impact that she made. She also was at the Quaschent River School back in the day, for those of you who remember when we had two separate schools in this building, one was the valley and one was the river, separate principals, and then the Coombe School, so there were three of those. So Maria was very much involved with the River School at that time, yes.
Wait, can we add one thing?
We can add one thing.
She was also a short-term secretary to this.
Oh, yes, she was, she served on this, supporting this committee. In her last few years with Mashpee, she actually came on board in the central office, did a great job with all of the, the bus challenges, right, Ashley? Maybe she rode a bus or two, I'm not sure. Backed in when we were doing the COVID monitors and making sure everyone was six feet apart and all of that. Anyway, so we were happy to have a little extra time with Maria, selfishly for me, in central office. Joyce O'Connor is finishing 10 years with Mashpee. Overall, though, how many years as a school nurse?
I've been a school nurse for 25 years and a nurse for 46.
So that is a lot of caretaking, she deserves now to be taken care of as well. But I will say, when Joyce came and she was the Mashpee Middle High School nurse, and then this, this current year, she's our float nurse, which means she supports in all three schools. I don't know, something about nurses, they always, particularly Joyce, has a way of calming me personally. All through the COVID time, anytime you had a question, a health-related question, or the way she interacted with kids, she just has that it factor that successful nurses have, and it's a special nurse that can sort of work in a school as well. Because you take care of staff, even though that's, I don't think, in your job assignment, and you take care of families and parents who are nervous about something, and then the, the way that you deal with students so that you get them to go back to class is really quite good. So we're very grateful for Joyce and her 10 years. Finally, we have Deb Goulart, she is finishing up as principal of the, which school is that now, let's see, Coombe School. But Deb has 21 years with Mashpee. She and I used to teach together, I think she was fourth grade when I was sixth grade, maybe? I, yeah. But Deb has had, she's worn a few hats when she's been here in Mashpee, she was Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment at one point. Second grade teacher after that, then became Assistant Principal and Principal of Cooms. And she just has also sort of a way of interacting with students that's very supportive and calming. She understands the, the leadership role that she's in, but also how to support families, sometimes during stressful situations where there's different perspectives on a situation. And I know that I've greatly valued working with you in our leadership team, and I will greatly miss you. I know that the, the entire district's gonna miss you a lot. And for all three of these ladies, first of all, I thank you so much for coming this evening, and really for the impact that you have had on the Mashpee community, on the students, on the families. We never know our impact, but you're in so many people's lives in some memory or some piece of who they are today is because of you three. So thank you so much for all that you've done for us. I know that we have Representative Viera here to award you some recognition on this, from the state level.
Thank you, congratulations. Hearing the backgrounds of the three of you, we're talking about the whole child, right? Whether it was in the lunchroom, whether it was on a day where they were under the weather, not feeling well, or whether it was in the classroom, or overseeing those that then oversaw the classroom. So I want to say thank you, it's, it's a tough job. I, I hear about it every day. My, my wife's the elementary school principal, she was a department head, and then she was a teacher when I first met her. And so I hear the challenges, particularly as we went through this last few years of COVID and changing and pivoting and back and forth, and the resiliency, the resiliency particularly for, for those of you that were close enough to retirement that maybe you could have said, you know what? I mean, this is enough for me right now, but no, we're gonna get through this. And, and to be to the other side and have a year here where you're gonna say goodbye to the profession, but have helped this community get through those difficult times. And so on behalf of the Commonwealth today, we, we want to thank you, and we want to say, as you go forward, don't forget Mashpee Schools, there's other ways to give back to our community and to continue to support, and I know that each person does that differently. On a personal note, Ms. Goulart, my first intern was your daughter when I became the town moderator in the town of Falmouth. And growing up in, in East Falmouth and T-Ticket.
She's 39 now.
She's 39 now, she's not an intern anymore, but congratulations to the three of you, congratulations to those that are not here but have completed throughout the course of the year, your tenure with the Mashpee Public Schools. And on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives would like to offer serious congratulations to you in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the Mashpee Public Schools and our entire community. Enjoy your retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given the 17th day of May, 2023, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and Dave Viera from T-Ticket. Congratulations.
I just want to add my thanks to the three of you and to those who are not here for all of your dedication to our students. You know, because of you, you know, our kids have done amazing things and we thank you, and I don't know if anybody else on the committee would like to say anything?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, like, you know, he was saying, like, you know, you guys had the opportunity to, like, you know, have called it quits and you hung in there for our kids, so it, it's a testament to not just like, you know, the last couple of years, but the entire length of your careers and, you know, how you, you know, took it upon yourselves to make a life dedication to improve and raise basically all of our kids. So thank you so much, and you're, you're definitely gonna be missed, I appreciate you.
Best job, Emma. Sorry, I have to picture.
All right, so if we could have a school committee, or they can come over there?
Whatever.
Whenever you see them.
I did my snap drop off.
I'm sorry for the technical glitch, but I just wanted to say, yes, congratulations to each of you.
Actually, it's gonna go there. There you go, now I've got everybody, ready? One, two, three, hold on. Wow, that's a good looking.
I think I want to say, I'll thank you to Patty, for all the support through COVID, but also through the time that I've spent in the Health Services Department of the District. She certainly appreciates, and all of you have supported and appreciate the importance of the health of the child, because without that foundation, the learning just really can't happen. And all of the nurses appreciate all of your support over the years, and, you know, put the foundation for what we do, that, that healthy mind, body, spirit of the child. And really give us a lot of support in that area, and that has been a great district. I, I gave them a great district, and this has been a wonderful support for us, so I really appreciate my time.
Thanks, Joyce.
You can always be a substitute nurse, Joyce, you know.
We'll see. I'll go real quickly on that, I just wanted to say thank you, being a teacher, of all the hats I've worn, being a teacher was my favorite job. I felt like I had, I don't know, more of an impact there. I don't know if that's true or not, but it was a great job, Mashpee's a great district, lots of resources, lots of support, thank you very much. So for me, it's been a wonderful career. I have two daughters and daughter-in-law, and they're all teachers.
Well, again, thank you, everyone, Dawn and Brian, I know they love, but did you want to add anything?
I actually, quickly wanted to say that, you know, thank you for your years of service, I think it's maybe in part due to you, and a large part partly due to you, the fact that we've got a number of administrative people who have been here not quite as long as you have, but have, that you've been excellent mentors to, not only with the students, but also to the staff, and you've been leaders in the community, and you're gonna be missed, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Moving right along.
Did you want to give any update of anything? I, I don't think we had it on there, but. Okay, okay. Okay, sounds good. Okay. In a week or so, we'll want to hear from you.
Okay. So next item, recommendation from the math curriculum team of the pre-K to 12 mathematics program to be implemented beginning in school year 23, 24. So is that you, Assistant Superintendent?
Well, it's me along with a great team, some of whom are here, and I want to apologize publicly because I forgot about the reorg, so I told them it would be right at the beginning of the agenda, and.
Thank you for your patience.
It certainly is, but the reorg takes a while and it's always awkward.
Sorry.
So thank you for sitting through it, and it's a great process that they now at least know who does what. So anyway, I am not projecting because we couldn't get, it's too much. So you all have handouts in, in front of you with the slides. Mr. Meaden and Mr. Myers will be happy to know I printed one slide per page, so I think you're gonna be able to see it a little better than you could at our curriculum subcommittee. So the, this year, we piloted or looked at current math curriculum, and also, sorry, Danny, can you hear me with a mask on, am I good? Okay. So we piloted math curriculum K to 12, but we did it in two different pockets. So I'm gonna first talk about the K to six process that I led, and then we had a seven through 12 process led by our mathematics department head, Carrie Rooney. We worked together, I'm gonna say she was the leader of that. So the first set of slides is K to six, and so last spring, I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, you can read it to yourselves, but we did research on highly qualified math programs, we created a pilot analysis committee, and solicited materials from vendors from four programs. Over the summer last year, we narrowed those down, we had the vendors come in and talk to us, or virtually, and we chose two programs that we wanted to field test for K to six, and we're gonna talk through those. But in the past, we have piloted programs where one teacher might, or a few teachers might take a program and run it the whole year and then give us feedback. We felt pretty strongly, both at the elementary and the high school level, that that model was not going to get us what we needed. A lot of times when a teacher pilots a program, they learn it and they become very attached to it, and it's hard to get actual real data from it. So we decided that we would field test units from programs, and that all of the teachers at a grade level would field test the same units so that we would get a variety of feedback on the same thing. So that was our sort of prep work, so we chose Reveal from Abroad Hill and Illustrious Math from Imagine Learning to look at in more depth. And then there was a, a lot of work that we put into deciding what our must-haves were, and so these were things, K to six, that we felt any program we went forward with really needed to have. So you can sort of see them there, everything from alignment with the Massachusetts frameworks to strong differentiation for populations like students with disabilities, students who are English learners, onboarding for new staff. There are a lot, you can see it, a lot of things that people felt were important, and so that drove the rest of our work. In terms of data collection, so we use the EdReports rubrics. All of the programs we looked at, Ed Reports is a national clearinghouse of curriculum rubrics. Everyone we looked at, according to Ed Reports, was highly qualified, but we decided to use their rubric to further evaluate the program from a Mashpee perspective. So the programs we looked at, every teacher filled out the Ed Reports rubric for math for that program. And then I put that into a Google Doc or a Google Form, so we were able to very quickly analyze that data. We also, no matter what we're evaluating with curriculum, we look at the cultural responsiveness and the ways in which curriculum represents the world in which we live. So we used the cultural responsiveness rubric from NYU, we used the testing bias in standards in curriculum materials, and we used Desi's culturally responsive teaching rubric. I will say, in mathematics, it's not as heavy a lift to look at cultural responsiveness, because it's not like with, with an ELA or social studies or science, it's, it's, there's more sort of words. In math, there's plenty of words, but primarily it's, it's numbers and concepts, so. But we did put all of the programs through those filters. And then we did site visits. Four of us went to Milford Public Schools, who is in year one of implementing Illustrious Math. We were able to, actually, all of us who went are here, Dr. Curley, Mrs. Mayan, and Mrs. Susan and I went up, and we saw fourth and fifth grade classes, and we saw first and second grade classes, we met with teachers, it was a really great experience. We were very grateful to Milford for inviting us in and allowing us to come, because I think it answered. because I think it answered a lot of our questions. And then Canton Public Schools is using Reveal for the first year. Reveal just came out. So they were not super comfortable having a group come in, but we had a Zoom meeting with them where we were able to ask questions and get their feedback as well. And then there were anecdotal pieces from the field tests, uh, that were sort of qualitative data, comments, feedback that people gave us. We used all of those things to consider programs. In terms of the Ed Reports scores, uh, again, I'm not gonna go into them except to say we took the average, um, scores for all of the, all of the subsections of the Ed Reports rubric and considered which one came out higher. It wasn't the only answer. It wasn't the only decision, you know, tool, but it was an important one. I already talked about the cultural responsiveness for both Reveal and Illustrious. Um, and then what I think you'll be very interested in is the cost analysis. So at this point, I have to stop the train and say, our, one of our must haves was that there would be a K to six program and we are not going to meet that likely. So as we did the field testing, grades, grade six in particular really struggled with both programs. They, um, and what we discovered, and it's sort of an obvious thing, but I didn't think about it until the feedback happened. All of both programs, Reveal has a K to five elementary program. And then they have a six to eight middle school program. Same with Illustrious. They have a K to five elementary and a six to eight, um, middle. Carrie's, uh, Carrie's group looked at Reveal as well and spoiler alert, they didn't like it. And neither did grade six. Same with Illustrious. And again, it's because they're different programs. It's the same company, it's the same concepts, but it's not, they felt like it was not engaging for kids. And whereas the ele, the rest of the elementary folks mostly were like, oh, it's super engaging. The kids loved it. We got student feedback as well on all of the programs and they were all fans of actually both. So the point is, in the last minute, probably maybe two weeks ago, we decided, okay, sixth grade really does need to be its own animal. And we need to make a decision of whether we want to keep it with a K to six model or whether we want to look at Big Ideas, which is a program that they use at the middle high school, and see if we want to push it into middle school. So you have cost comparisons here for what I believe will be the recommendation as we move forward. The red for Reveal, you can see that for K to five, it's a six-year license. All of the online subscriptions, consumables for six years, as well as the PD for next year, would be a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents for K to five. And if we went with Big Ideas for grade six, that would be nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So the K to six, um, cost would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, the biggest piece to know on this slide before I get to Illustrious is, um, Mr. Myers' favorite little sub, you know, the footnote at the bottom. The funding source for all of this is SIR. So it is not gonna come out of appropriations. We've already budgeted for whatever we end up choosing. I'll say that a couple of times so that Mr. Myers should feel as good about that. Everyone knows. Um, Illustrious gave us, there's two options for Illustrious because they gave us, I said, just give me the whole kit and kaboodle, like everything we could possibly want. And that's the option A, two eighty-nine, seven eighty-one. And that would be, I don't believe we would need all of that, but I, I kind of wanted the worst case scenario. And then I pulled out all the PD and so it would be two hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one for just the six years of materials. And then we would kind of all-accart the PD on top of that. So that's the cost comparison. And then our recommendation, so we are recommending, the committee recommends that the district move forward with Reveal for K to five for next school year. Um, you can see the reasons why, um, which again, I'll just highlight, the differentiation was stronger, we felt, for, so that we could reach the needs of the kids who perhaps math is not their favorite. It's more cost-effective and it had a really strong online component that aligned with MCAST, we felt, with what the kids are expected to do in MCAST. We really liked Illustrious too, so I want to make sure it's clear, like, they, and the, it was, it was a great experience to be able to do that. But we felt like Reveal matched our needs better at this time. And then grade six, grade six is working with Mrs. Brody currently. And they're gonna pilot a unit in Big Ideas over the next two weeks. We are pretty sure that's gonna be the recommendation we're going with. So that's what I proposed here. If for whatever reason they try it and they're like, eh, Reveal is really not how we want to go, we'll bring that conversation back to you. But for the purposes of voting tonight, um, the curriculum subcommittee we met on Monday and they recommended, I had given two options for you to vote on. They recommended just giving one and then coming back if we needed to change it. Okay, so that's K to six. And I'm gonna talk through seven through 12 and then Mrs. Brody, do you have questions for that? So they looked at Reveal as well because our idea was, oh my gosh, a K to 12 curriculum, would that be amazing? Well, it would if it was right and it wasn't. And then Big Ideas Math has a new version out. That's the program we've been targeting. Um, the timeline was the same. They looked at programs in the spring, decided in the summer of which to pilot and what units. And they developed their own list of sort of must haves. And the teachers, all of the math department, participated in the field tests. They completed the Ed Reports as well. And their recommendation is to stay with Big Ideas Math for next school year and for the six years out, for again, those reasons sort of that are there. The things that were challenging with Big Ideas Math in the past, the company had really sort of made some shifts and they felt like now they were doing it, they, they had the, the system down. And so they're recommending that be still. Cost-wise for grade seven through 12, for this, just as again, the six-year license, would be sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And Mr. Myers, where is that money coming from?
Answer.
Yes, answer. Thank you. Okay, so finally, um, the summary of recommendations. We are recommending that the district move forward with Reveal for K to five and Big Ideas for grades six through 12 with a total cost for six years of licenses and materials at two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, all to be funded through SIR funds. And then finally, the most important and the one reason I wish I had it up on the screen was to thank our committee members because they were awesome. And again, I can say, um, Michelle Rabello is here. She was on the elementary team. Steph Suzza, who is going to be our new math coach next year, which we're super excited about, was on the committee. And Greg Mayan. But also we had, uh, three sixth graders, uh, three sixth grade teachers. Anyone who teaches math in sixth grade was on it. Uh, Dr. Curly was on it. We had representation from every grade level and it was fantastic. And then at the middle high school, Carrie's whole department participated. So you can see the names. I don't mean to like go crazy about it, but they really worked so hard. And so it's really important that they get recognized for that commitment that they, they have to mathematics, which as a reading specialist, I don't always feel as much excitement about what Mrs. Mayan does and Mrs. Suzza does. Okay, so that was like my very quick, how did I do, Mr. Myers?
You did good.
Did I hit all the topics we discussed?
We did.
All right. I want to thank Mr. Myers and Mr. Whedon as well. We had a great meeting on Monday where they gave me incredible feedback that I completely adjusted the presentation as a result of. So thank you for your time. And if there are any questions on any of the stuff we talked about, we're happy to.
All right, Mr. Myers. No, I, I will let you guys last, I'll go last.
So, one of the things that I thought about later, um, after the subcommittee meeting. I was trying to tie this back in my mind of how changing this program is going to help address or would help address some of the issues that we've had here as a result of, um, regression from COVID. So we didn't talk about that at the subcommittee, but if someone could help expound on that, I would appreciate it.
Well, I'll speak for elementary for sure. Um, and then maybe Mrs. Brody, you can speak for seven through 12. From an elementary perspective, first of all, I would say regression is probably not the right word. It's more of a loss of learning. And I will say, our MCAST scores showed actually significant growth last year in math. Our ELA was actually further behind. We grew less in ELA than we did in mathematics. So that's actually something to celebrate. But Everyday Math, which we've been using since Mrs. O'Brien, 2010. Uh, we use Everyday Math Core, this begins in 2010, and it's, it's the 2016 version currently, but this program's been since 2010. And it's a good program. It's served our needs, but, and, sorry, not but, and they're not making it anymore. The Reveal, um, Abrahah Hill does Everyday Math and they've shifted to Reveal. So the program itself was not going to be on the highly qualified list that Desi provides. And so we felt it was important to only go with things that were considered to be highly qualified. And then if you go into our must haves and what we felt were important, I think those differentiation tools are really the, the key for us. So that a teacher, and, and teachers, feel free to jump in on this. Michelle is a special education teacher, so if you have other feedback, please add it. But the teacher can easily assess where students are every day and then tailor their instruction or their groupings or whatever to what the kid needs that day on that scale. And I think that was, that's gonna be a really valuable tool for us. And then Mrs. Mayan, Mrs. Suzza and Mr. Bellon, do you have anything to add?
I gave the, I, I tried all the different tools and I gave my students the online version of the assessment. And, um, I could look at their results and it told me, okay, these six kids got this problem wrong. Here's what to do with them, which will be out of luck. Um, because the, the amount of resources that are available is more than we'll probably ever use, but that's not always a bad thing because then you have everything for everyone that, um, that you need for anyone. So. And not just for kids who are struggling, but also for kids that are higher.
Yeah, that extension. I don't know, Steph or Michelle?
No, I, um, I, I agree too. I think that, um, the differentiation piece and then that program also offers, um, two different options for teachers. You can choose the guided, um, instruction, um, method, or you can go into a whole room. So it really is diversified based on your class and on teaching style. So I think that also is really important. But the, the differentiation piece and the ability to have small guided, um, groups is definitely something that will help, um, our kids. I think too that Reveal was also the reason, one of the reasons why teachers really enjoy that program over Illustrious was, um, for students that are struggling in mathematics, Reveal definitely had the edge on that. It was a lot of, um, really focusing on conceptual understanding and really getting kids to maneuver conceptual abstract, but taking that time to do it. So that's why the teachers really support that we, um, in our schools do.
I just, hold on one second. Dan, can you hear what the teachers are saying? Okay, I just want to make sure you can hear because they don't have the microphone. I just want to make sure.
Absolutely. As everyone just said, um, I think what's really important is there's so much heart with math during it. Like after last minute, it tells you what they were supposed to get and they do a little X and Z right after, so you can really get in. And then current program is a lot of concept in one minute. A lot of times you don't catch those things they're missing until they go to take the unit test and do all the things at once. It's just a lot of this, the smaller chunking and, um, you know, feedback.
And then grade seven through 12?
So for us, um, with Big Ideas, one of the things that we didn't like before was that we weren't able to incorporate concepts from previous units into one assignment. And that's a change that they made. Um, and we also can incorporate problems from any of the textbooks. You know, so if I have an Algebra II class that's really struggling on Algebra I concept, I can pull up Algebra I material and use that, um, with the program. So we've been able to really incorporate and catch those things that the kids are missing that are those key concepts that they need to move forward, um, for that last one.
Thank you.
Brian, did you have any additional questions? Matt?
No, no question. It just sounds, it was like, I like the fact that like you'll be able to help students that are struggling, but it sounds like also that piece is missed when you have a student that's excelling and then they get bored and then they lose interest in the subject. Like it sounds like it provides them to still be challenged and, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I should clarify. It's probably like a magic potion or anything.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I'm like thinking about all these like kids doing math, all like that.
Perfect like world stuff. No, but like, you know, but it does sound like, you know, it, it attempts to address that.
Yeah.
Definitely gives us lots of choices.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the Big Ideas is what was currently being used and now we're just looking to include the sixth grade. This will now.
Not just that, it's a new version.
It's a new version, but it.
And then we are recommending that we add sixth grade to that.
So in a sense, it will help kind of that transition from this building to the middle.
Yeah, we were really excited about the sixth grade because we really wanted to like Reveal because we knew that they were looking at Reveal, so we thought it would be great if it was like K, it's really K to 10 because the 11th and 12th kind of do a little bit of a different, um, thing, but, um, I'm excited. And the, the math team at the middle high school is really excited about the K to sixth grade.
And I had sent, uh, Mr. Ruggie this blog ahead of time.
Did you have any questions, Dan?
Yeah, actually. So, um, first off, I just have to say, it's impressive to me, being again, the new fish in the pond here, how much work you all have put in around the curriculum aspect of this. Clearly you've, uh, looked at, you know, what the process has been for you guys, for the students. Um, so again, just super impressive. Um, I guess one, uh, two questions. Uh, first being, um, it looks like the Reveal program talked a little bit about, um, having some additional resources for Spanish-speaking individuals. Are there any other languages that are a part of that or is it just, uh, English and, and Spanish?
No, I asked them that. They are, they said, well, we're looking to add more languages, but they haven't. We do have other translation tools that we have in the district, so kids can get the materials and the language they need, but it's not quite as easy as, if it's Spanish, it's gonna be super easy.
Now, with all the programs that we looked at as well, Spanish was a big one.
Yeah, there were no programs that had anything besides Spanish. That was frustrating. Yes.
Yep. Uh, and then the other question is, I know that you talked a little bit about looking at these programs from a culturally responsive lens, but did either of them, um, shine a little bit brighter than the other? Or do they seem to be pretty at par?
For math, no. They were pretty equal because there's really just looking at sort of the, the context of the math problem. And all of them use names that were from a variety of cultures, you know, as the, you know, instead of like Johnny has an apple and then Jane has an apple, like there were sort of a variety of names used, locations, things like that. But like I said, in mathematics, it's not typically going to, we wanted to make sure there was nothing glaring and we did not see anything glaring that, that would not work. I think that's probably the extent of it.
With Big Ideas, actually, the way that they address that is to, um, not use things at all, all the programs. I mean, all of the problems are, you are doing this. So it really puts a student into the seat of what's happening, which I kind of like because it makes them more part of the action.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So as I recall from our sub, um, committee, um, discussion, there was still one outstanding piece here that was.
Grade six?
Pardon me?
Grade six, do you mean?
Yes.
So, um, Mr. Whedon had asked me to refresh his memory on how the wording of a motion might potentially go. And I think it was, it had the word contingent upon. But I think what we're asking from the committee is a vote to accept the proposal as it is. And then with the understanding that if the sixth grade wants to come back with something different, we'll bring it back to the committee for Reveal. And I did text Mr. Whedon the language the way I think he said it, but I, I may be wrong.
So you just want to explain to the rest of the committee what the outstanding item is?
I did, did I?
Or did you?
Yeah, she mentioned that grade six is still being determined and they're going to be piloting.
Remember, I was like, oh, they, we wanted to like it, but they did not have all the math.
So we're gonna, they're gonna pilot a couple of units, sixth grade, report back, do the same process.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. I do. No, I mean, I, I mean, I can't explain it yet if anyone misses.
That being said, um, I'll entertain a motion. We do a vote on accepting the proposal with the contingency.
I'll make a motion, Kathy.
Right. Do you want me to read what the motion is or I can just send it to you? No, I have to say that loud?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommended proposal for a K through 12 mathematics curriculum adoption as presented, contingent upon completion of the evaluation process for grade six.
Did you get that, sure?
I'll second that for discussion purposes. That's.
Okay, now I remember.
No, that's not what I thought I just heard you say, that we were going to do it without any contingencies and then come back if there was a subsequent.
That is what I just said. But then I looked at my notes when I sent this to Brian and it had, you had given the word contingent upon. So maybe we want to reword the vote.
So I'm confused.
No, you're right. So maybe we want to reword it to just accepting the proposal as presented. And then we'll come back if we need to make a change.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to accept and recommend the proposal.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to accept and recommend the proposal for K through 12 mathematics curriculum adoption as presented.
No, it's K. It's K.
K through 12.
The motion for voting says preused, so.
So what does that mean? Can we not vote?
Well, I think we can, yeah. Just making sure it wasn't, just making sure it wasn't preused.
So the motion is to accept the recommended proposal for K through 12 mathematics curriculum adoption. Let's second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Dan?
Right.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work in evaluating. We look forward to seeing how grade six enjoys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. The approval over the minutes of the May third meeting on pages two and three of our packet.
Was it there for that one?
Any changes? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to reapprove the notice as presented.
Thank you, Don.
That's fine.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Okay, I will call for a vote. Dan?
Sorry, I'll abstain.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
I'm abstaining.
And I will vote yes. Before the superintendent, so superintendent.
Okay, so I just want to highlight a few events. It's a very busy season in the Mashpee Public Schools, and I'm going to just sort of quickly go back over last week. And I do want to welcome Dan Rodriguez as the newest member of the school committee. He's on the screen for those of you who haven't been able to see him at home. Last Wednesday, we did the dedication of the Hall of Flags at Mashpee Middle High School. That was a wonderful event, and it was very nice with the Ford, with the Ford family there. I did want to acknowledge three students. Ariana Cuso, Brianna Johnson, and McKay Auger did a great job singing two different, actually, there were three songs altogether that night. Really made it a very special event. And I'm so glad I was able to be a part of that and that we were able to make it happen. So thank you all. Last Thursday night was scholarship night at Mashpee Middle High School, which is always a wonderful event and just to share with the public. So for the class of 2023, approximately $162,700 in scholarship money was given out to 51 students, 125 individual awards. Can you note in here? Anyway, 125 individual awards were given ranging from $100 to $10,000. And I do want to acknowledge Lindsay Cat, Deanne Almeida, Julianne McCush, and Maureen Goldsmith, who do a lot of that work and do, spend a lot of time with students, making sure they know of the opportunities available and that they meet all their deadlines. So that was a wonderful event. On Friday night, Southport, the community of Southport, held their annual scholarship dinner, where they invite the recipients of this year's scholarships to a dinner. And they gave $34,000 in scholarships to 14 or 15 students. Our band, our jazz band performed, our choral group performed. It's just a wonderful, wonderful evening of gratitude and really the importance of how connected we feel. I, a lot of members who live there came up to me, Hope was there, Dr. Hanscom was there, Dr. Manette was there as well, and Consuelo Carroll, but the positive feedback we get about the schools is just unsolicited, so it's just a wonderful experience. Saturday night was the prom. I don't know if you saw the pictures that got posted, but I know from the feedback, and I know Dr. Manette was at that as well. But the facility itself, which was New Seaberry Country Club, was very, gave high praises for our students. Everyone was well behaved, they all looked stunning, and they had fun. So it was a wonderful event, and we couldn't have had better weather. On Monday, during the day, a group of middle high school students went to the Human Rights Academy, which is held annually at Cape Cod Academy. I was able to go as well and introduce our speakers because we actually, as a school, were somewhat of a keynote where the students presented the Who We Are project. This is now year two, and I know they've gone to Provincetown and shared that project with that school as well. But most Cape schools were represented at this event, and really to watch, it was Tacey McGrail and Amna Iqbal, who are this year's sort of leaders of that project. It's become a legacy senior project, so we already have next year's juniors who are taking it on. But that project interviews immigrant families from Mashpee. Sometimes they have a student at the middle high school, and sometimes they don't. But the goal is creating sort of this sense of understanding of really how diverse our community is and how we all want to belong here. And listening, you know, firsthand to narratives, they go to the homes, they do a photography shoot of the family. We have students who write their story of some of the challenges the family has faced and overcome. And I know Amna has talked about, it wasn't until there was a story written about her dad that she realized all of the struggles he went through to bring the family here and how hard he works to make sure they have what they, they need. So anyway, that Human Rights Academy was a wonderful event, and that ties to this Sunday night. Everyone should go to the Mashpee Public Library from seven to eight. That is when this year's, this year's group of stories will be shared in an exhibit, and then that will be shared in various locations throughout the year. Monday night was a choral concert at Mashpee Middle High School. That was outstanding. Tuesday night was an instrumental concert, also very well done. This past week has been another MCAS week at the Quashnet School and the middle high school. It was science for grades five, eight, and math in grade 10. And the only MCAS hanging out there is on June 6th and 7th. That's grade nine and 10, science. And I do think we're piloting a civics MCAS. What grade level is that?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade, we are going to be piloting that. All of the AP testing is done, which was like about two weeks' worth of, it felt like, everyday MCAS testing. Yesterday, I will say, we had the commitment ceremony for five of our senior athletes. So Anna Canis, Canis, Erica Carroll, I don't ever say her middle name right there. She is playing soccer at Western Newman College. Ava Desmonde is playing soccer for Salva Regina. Ava Kelly is doing gymnastics at Springfield College. Colton Collarin is playing baseball for Riviera University, and Jesse Hickey is playing football at Western State. I will say, all but one is carrying on in their Mashpee blue. All four, except for Springfield, are all royal blues, so it made for a really great picture, so. I think that's all I have. I know that this Friday night is a kickball game between the Coons and the Quashnet School, so I've heard Mary Kate say, either way, she's got some fingers on the trophy.
I'm not a good with it.
She's good with whoever. And I know they're not here to do any reports. Do you have any questions for any of the principals, though? They are here. Yeah? Okay. To point out, just for upcoming, because we don't meet again, your committee doesn't meet till June 21st. The Walk of Honor is June 2nd, so you're always welcome to participate in that. I don't have the schedule laid out yet, but in the morning, they will go to the graduates, go in their caps and gowns to the Coon School, the Quashnet School, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, which I got to make sure I coordinate that. And then they land back at the middle high school. They do a walk through those hallways, and then class day generally starts at noon. Class day will be in the gymnasium this year. Everybody's welcome to attend that. And then graduation is June 3rd. That's a Saturday. It starts at 10:00, but you really should be there no later than 9:30. Earlier is better. I know, Brian, you'll come earlier for our native graduates. We try to get a picture of all of you in the gym. You're all welcome to participate in the awarding of diplomas and the book. I know that former school committee member Chris Santos has requested to be able to give his son his diploma, which we actually think is wonderful, so he'll be there too. So that's that. Any other questions, I don't know? You do have the list of events for, all the way till the last day of school, which to reinforce with everyone, is June 16th. That is a Friday. It is a half-day for students, as of right now.
No more Saturdays.
No more Saturdays. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business. First up, we have a first read of the Mashpee Public Schools Wellness Policy for school year 2324. We will have a second read final vote June 21st. The policy subcommittee met on May 12th and reviewed this. And I believe that is pages six through, the end of the packet, actually, was the new updated wellness policy. Page six shows the proposed changes that were presented. Nurse Stacy was there, as well as the.
Assistant.
Food director. And they presented these changes to the current policy. The committee, you know, the subcommittee spoke about it. Don, do you have anything you want to say about this?
I mean, really, the biggest change is updating the statistics to reflect more current information. This stuff that was in the policy is a little stale, or there's been more recent updates. Beyond that, it's not really a good change.
So as I see, the proposed changes will replace the wording that's on page 10. Do you have questions on the links of that? So take a look over that. If you have any questions about it, feel free to reach out to the subcommittee or to the superintendent, or to, I'm sure Nurse Stacy will be happy to answer any other questions. But we will have our second read final vote on June 21st. The school committee summer retreat planning. We had initially put August 14th and 10 to 1 on the calendar for the retreats and plannings. Do you want to bring anything?
Yeah, for that one, I know myself, like, I'm going to be away that physical day. That's the actual day that I'm going to be there. I don't know if there's any other picket dates that you could go with, or I'm turning my calendar on. It's a Monday. Yeah, I'm gone for two weeks at that point, like from that day.
Is that the start? Oh, that's the start.
Yeah, that's the start. Yeah. Is the week before a good for anyone, or?
I'm fine with the part of the bond of Brian or Dan. What'd you say?
Because I can flex.
Before?
Yeah. And I'll flex.
The same time period, okay?
Yeah, we aren't physically gone, I can flex whatever worked for the majority of the committee.
Brian and Dan, will we go Saturday day, or will we go Saturday for the year? Can you?
I think as of right now, I don't see any challenges to.
Yeah, the ninth is can't work because that's one of the new employee orientation days. It's actually the tribal, the tribe's PD day for the new people. But the eighth would be.
Ideal?
Ideal.
Okay. I really have any public, it sounds like the eight from 10 to 1, or?
Thank you, guys.
And we'll plan that as we, you know, next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, and then I guess also to put on the calendar, I can't believe we're already talking about November, but the Mass, MASC, so Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Members Joint Conference in Hyannis, the dates have been announced as November 8th through the 10th of 2023. It's held right here in Hyannis. I highly recommend it if you have not attended one. Just the networking with fellow state school committee members alone is very valuable. I know I have learned many things attending the past couple of years, so if you want to pencil that in, I'm sure Sherry will let us know when it's time to register. But we have the dates, so thank you. We moved 10. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring forth at this time that was not previously known? Do we have any public comments? At this time. Okay, that being said, we have, I will take a motion to adjourn the public meeting and enter into executive session without reconvening in public. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? No. Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so public meeting is adjourned. Thank you.